We're open to public comment.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Tonight we have an academic presentation. Joel, do you want to introduce?
Tonight, we're very fortunate to have with us Kristin Candia. She's the elementary school guidance counselor. We were fortunate a few years back to have her join our staff. And this presentation is long overdue. We tried to get it into last year's board meetings and it just scheduling wise did not work out. And as we know, this is an additional board meeting or a made up board meeting from last week. And Kristin re-accommodated us by changing her schedule around. So I want to thank her for doing that. She does some great work at the elementary schools. She started a program called Second Step. And she's going to walk you through that program tonight and tell you how it's been instrumental to our school. So Kristin, thank you so much for being here. And I turn it over to her now.
Okay, thank you for having me tonight. Um, I can, I can, is that right? Worked? Yeah. So it's not.
You might have to play button.
So I run a program. It's called Second Step. It's a K through fifth classroom-based social-emotional learning program. And, oh, thank you. Awesome. Thanks Joel. Yep. And the social-emotional program is designed to increase children's school success and decrease problem behavior. And the program promotes social-emotional competence as well as self-regulation skills or self-control, which contributes to success both in life and in school. Children, research states that children with good social-emotional skills can have empathy, can manage strong emotions, solve interpersonal problems, make friends, get along with others, and to really persist at tasks like that grit that everyone's talking about that helps them with that as well. Children with good self-control can focus their attention, they can manage their thoughts and their feelings, can get along a lot better with others, control their behaviors, ignore distractions, and sustain and shift their attention. The research has also shown that students that have these skills, they tend to stay in school, graduate, go to college, get better jobs. Those students that don't have these skills are more likely to drop out, get pregnant, get involved with drugs and alcohol, or other illegal behaviors, gang activity, or get into trouble in some other ways. The four units that I cover, the skills for learning, empathy, emotional management, and problem solving, and I'm going to just briefly go through each one of those with you tonight. So we'll start, we'll start with skills for learning. So in this, this particular unit, I cover focusing attention. With the smaller kids, like kindergarten through first grade, I talk about using those attentiscopes. And that helps kids to take away all the distractions that are going on and really focus on the speaker or focus on the work or the task that's at hand. Then we go into what listening is, using self-talk. That's important to help students stay focused. Using positive self-talk that helps students to stay focused as well and to believe in themselves. And then the last skill we talk about is being assertive, which is when you want something, you need something, you need to ask for it, but there's a way to ask for it. So we, I go into what that is about. If someone's bothering you, how do you deal with that? Or if you need, you know, help with your math homework, how do you ask for it? So we go into what being assertive is, which is your shoulder's your back, your head is up. You look at the person in the eye. You use a calm voice. You're not yelling, you're not too low where they can't hear you. You're right in the middle. You're using that respectful language. And that's important in being assertive to let the person know how you're feeling. With these skills, students are better able to self-regulate, have that self-control. It's so important to learn, to manage their emotions, and then to also solve problems. And our second unit, we go over empathy, which is feeling or understanding how someone else is feeling. And part of that is identifying and understanding those feelings. How do we do that? It's taught by looking at the person, focusing on their face, their body for clues, being detectives, looking at the face, the body, the situation to understand how the person feels. What's their point of view? Respecting the similarities and the differences between each other. Taking other persons' perspectives. How does that person feel? And then compassion. And that's the empathy that's in action, the action part of empathy, which I explain, is doing something, saying something that's kind, doing something that's kind of helping the person. Explain that you can stop at, oh, I can look at that person, I can see that they're upset. Either face their body and I can move on. Or I can take that extra step and actually say something or do something to help. And that's the compassion piece of empathy, showing your care and your concern. Children with empathy are more likely to achieve, to be less aggressive, to be better liked by their peers, and be socially skilled, be able to move throughout groups and not have problems with that. And our third unit is emotion management unit. And this is understanding those strong feelings. So what's happening? And I explain to students, think of your hand as your brain. And the fingers are the thinking part of your brain and the thumb is the feeling part of your brain. When you're feeling comfortable, your body's feeling comfortable, you're feeling calm, your brain looks like this. The thinking part of your brain sits on top of the feeling part of your brain like this. The thinking part is managing that feeling part of your brain. When you're having a strong emotion, you flip your lid. That means that your thinking part of the brain is no longer able to manage those feelings. It's losing control. The feeling part of the brain takes over. That's why you can't think when you're having that strong emotion. And we learn to identify the strong emotion. What's happening in your body? A lot of times your stomach feels sick or your heart's beating fast. Your head hurts. Your muscles tighten up. You're breathing very fast. So we teach students to recognize what's going on in their bodies so then they can say to themselves, okay, I'm having a strong emotion, I feel that in my body. And then we go into managing those strong feelings. We go through steps to actually use that self-talk to say, okay, stop. I'm feeling really mad right now. And then calming down those strong feelings. And we go through the belly breathing as a technique, also counting and using that positive self-talk to help us to calm down. And then children with these skills can definitely cope better in situations, get along better with others and their peers, solve problems, and definitely make better choices when they're calm. Because we all know people are really not really making great choices. And I always say, like, if you react, that's your emotion part of your brain. But if you think, take the time to calm yourself down, then you can think and then you can make a better choice in that situation. And our last unit is problem-solving steps. And in these, in this unit, we go over making and keeping friends, solving problems, playing fairly, and taking responsibility for our actions. And we go through these steps. The first step, save the problem without blame. The second step, think of solutions that are safe and responsible and respectful. And explore consequences. If I do this, this might happen. What will happen if I do this? And then last, pick the best solution, make your plan. And if your first plan doesn't work, make sure you have a couple backup plans as well. You can go back and say, let me try this. Children with problem-solving skills are less impulsive, less aggressive, they're better liked, and they're also more socially skilled with their peers. And then some of the other services that I provide are group counseling. I do confidence boosters, friendship groups, organization groups, mission transition. That's for our fifth graders that are going up to the middle school to help them become adapted to what the middle school will be like. And also individual counseling and crisis intervention. So it's, you know, quick, but I just want everyone to know that, you know, what the work is going on in the elementary school. So I appreciate you having me tonight. Thank you. Is there any questions?
I wish I had this in grammar school.
Oh, good. Number two, how often do you visit the various classes? Like, how do you structure this?
I'm in, I go in once a week to all the classes, K through third. So it's, and then I'm in the special ed classes as well. Fourth and fifth, there's, I'm in one fourth grade class, but it's, I can't do fourth and fifth along with K through three because there's about six sections in each grade level. So, but I'm able to see, which is wonderful in a sense because I get to know the students really well. So I'm in the classrooms every week. And it's kindergarten, there's 26 lessons, and first through fifth, there are 22 lessons.
Do you find that kids respond?
I do. Yeah, I do.
Yeah, I imagine, yeah.
Yeah, and it's fun to hear when they come back to me and say, you know, I tried this, Mrs. Candy, and it works. You know, that's exciting for me. Or, you know, even you coming up today, like.
I can tell you firsthand that it makes a difference. Because she, on the way home today, actually asked, was telling me, we learned about belly breasts and cutting them off. So he comes home for sure and she talks all about how Ms. Candy is in her room every Tuesday. It's one of her favorite days. So it does make a huge difference.
And I appreciate that being back too. So I love working with the kids too. I really do enjoy it.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for, thank you for that.
Moving on to suggestions for reports. To be resolved, Board of Education, based upon the recommendation issued to the tenant, approves and acknowledges reviewing the following reports. Board of Education Meeting Minutes, Tentative Enrollment Report, December 1st, 2017, December 22nd, 2017, period four. Our Treasuries Report, December 2017, which is the General Fund, the School Lunch Fund, Special Aid Fund, and the Capital Fund. Can I have a motion, please? It's like that, second by Tom. Discussion?
One question for Louise. What's the difference, and maybe we can talk about this offline. I called just a minute to email you earlier. What's the difference between transfers slash loans between funds and inter-fund transfers?
You're looking at the Treasuries Report?
Yeah. Because one of them zeros out and the other one does not. So I'm assuming it's transfers outside of those funds. Like I said, we can certainly cut it by five after. It's an easy answer.
What you're looking at, so that's net payroll.
Okay. The one that does zero.
So it's a transfer that comes out of the general fund for the net payroll.
Okay. Makes sense.
That's a great question, by the way.
Thank you.
Usually an in-between fund should zero out, so.
Right. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Anyone else have a question? Okay, hold over the favor. opposed, so carried. Under our curriculum and instruction, our director's report, Joel. I'm sorry.
You want director questions? Sorry.
Director's reports. And we'll get to.
Just anxious.
It's a lot to see.
Nobody? All right. Joel?
All right. Well, Happy New Year, everyone. The principal's report has quite a few things since the last time I wrote, since we've had some more days. We got some exciting news this week. Kathleen Sickles, our assistant principal, and Kathy Simpson, our Bozies rep for Teachers College, both got late.
Admittance.
Admittance to the Teachers College Professional Development Institute next week. So they'll be going down on Sunday and going Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. So four really packed days of great information and stuff that they can bring back to our teachers. So we're very excited about that. As you know, Kathy Simpson's been working on Tuesdays with our staff for the last few years. So anything new she can bring in, and then of course, now having Kathleen with that wealth of knowledge is going to really help our implementation of Teachers College reading workshop go that much further. So we're excited about that. The, I want to give a thanks to Mr. Zimmer and his students. Mrs. Potash, Mrs. Wiston, and Mr. Cosellino brought students down to the elementary school the last few days to work on robotics with our students. We had so many people wanting to be in that hallway doing the different activities that they had planned that we, obviously, we couldn't accommodate every classroom. But we definitely want them, to invite them back because the kids loved it. There was so much noise in that hallway, but it was good noise. It was happy energy and the kids were really getting a lot out of it. And this afternoon, when I was loading one of the buses, one little girl happened to say, you know, I think we could build a robotic dinosaur. How cool is that? So that was exciting. So again, thank you to those folks for making that happen for our school. Just a couple of other announcements. New York State released the questions for ELA and MAM. And we went to a workshop last Thursday and looked at where some of our shortcomings were, where our strengths were. Over the last few days, we got those questions together. We'll be giving them to the teachers so that they can focus attention on the types of questions that were on those assessments. Not teaching to the test, but maybe looking at some formatting. And if there is a skill or two that we need to really focus on before that assessment period starts, we obviously want them to have opportunity to do that. They'll be working. Even though the test questions are grades three, four, and five, every teacher in the building will have access to those released questions and our data so that they can take a look right down from kindergarten on how they helped to inform those assessments. PTA got canceled twice because of weather, but they're very excited to meet in the beginning of February and start talking about our parents as reading partners. Someone from the new library that's opening reached out, so hoping that we can make a connection between our PTA and the library. One of my goals always has been to get as many library cards into the hands of students as possible. So that's something that I think we will be working on in concert with them. Jump Rope for Heart, I did fail to mention that on this report, and how I missed it. February is always Jump Rope for Heart Month. Our students will be participating in that again. That will kick off on February 1st and run through the month. And then just on a final note, I know it's later in the agenda, but I want to publicly acknowledge Deb Monahan, one of our teaching assistants, for her number of years of service to our district. She's definitely going to be missed. And I think I've covered everything that I wrote down as extras. So if you have any questions.
Good.
All right. Thanks.
The new guy?
The new guy.
Keep us guessing, Dan.
I do. It's part of the, it's part of the middle school thing, you know. We never know what's going to happen. Just a couple brief things. We're celebrating No Name Calling Week this week. We have activities going on. Today was Paint It Blue Day or a blue sticker, just in support of, you know, being kind, right? And so people are getting their fingernail painted blue. I beat Miss Connors there. And we're doing our math, our second math benchmarks, which is really exciting to see the progress. They'll be scored on Friday, the initial scoring of it. We're trying a method of scoring which is each teacher is becoming an expert in a question. Rather than a teacher scoring the entire test, an entire test themselves, they're going to score a question of the test. Obviously, they'll have to score more than one, but they'll score every question number seven. They'll begin to see where the breakdowns of the students are on that question and then be able to have that discussion as a group of teachers. What do we need to do to improve our instruction in that area? So it's, as we've talked all the time, the benchmarks are really for the teachers. I know we're trying to measure what the kids are doing and how they're doing, but it's really for the teachers to improve instruction. So that's how we're looking at using these. All right. I think that's really it. I've had to have any questions? Anyone? Thanks, Dan. Joel?
Good evening, everyone. Just a few additions to the High School Principal's report. Last weekend, the Highland Wrestling Team hosted an 18 duo meet tournament and the Highland Huskies placed second out of 18 teams. Also, on January 6th and on January 15th, the Highland Varsity Cheer Team brought home first place trophies within the co-ed division. So congratulations to both of those teams for a job well done. And the trophies, there were, we have four trophies in the main office being proudly displayed as a result of these victories. So congrats to those students and their coaches. And finally, finally, yesterday, I'm happy to officially welcome Mr. Judge. Yesterday was Mr. Judge's first day as assistant principal at Highland High School. And I've been waiting a long time for him to start. So welcome to our district, Mr. Judge. And then very nice welcome. He spent a lot, as much time as he can in the hallways yesterday and today, trying to meet as many students and faculty as possible. So it's a weird week because the Regents exam's going on this week. So he really hasn't had formal introductions to our students yet, but I plan on that happening on Monday when he gets to meet the rest of them.
Welcome, Mr. Judge.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
There have been some additions since I wrote my report as well. One of the things that I put down was what Joel was speaking about. We did attend a data workshop at Bolster County Bozies last week and Joel, another teacher. And we looked at the item maps, which allowed us to look at each released question that was put out by the state and determine how well our students did on each question as opposed to the other students in the county. So we compiled a list of questions for both the elementary and I worked on the middle school. And then we were able to run off all those questions today so they can be distributed by the principals in the manner that they wish to do that. At the middle school, I worked with Chris Parker last week and Lisa Neer. And Chris has really done a deep dive with students with disabilities. She's researching different ways to increase the state test scores. And we have some ideas that we're going to continue to work on, such as creating smaller testing areas and more of them, and doing some general test preparation before the test dates. Also, I wanted to update you on the benchmarks. They've really been moving along. Kindergartens already completed their second math benchmark and their data's been entered and analyzed. And I'll be meeting with them on Friday. Also, I'll be meeting with grades four and five on Friday to discuss the first benchmark with them. And I met with third grade last week. So we'll be wrapping it up this Friday with the benchmarks. That's it. Anybody have any questions?
Could you review that again about the, I got the kindergarten second benchmark.
Yeah, we're going to do this kindergarten second benchmark on Friday. And then we'll also be doing the fourth and fifth grade first benchmark on Friday. And I've met with third grade last Friday, so that would cover all of the grade levels. And then they're all getting ready within the next three weeks to start their second benchmark exam. Kindergarten's leading the way. They wanted to do it early.
Can you just give us a little bit of information on the strategic scorecard that you included in the last work?
Yeah. It's an overview and it was something that Tom had brought from Port Jervis. And he would like, he wanted this information, he wanted to share it with you and so that we can look at it and set some goals, to see where we want to be, where we're going. Just a trend of where we've been.
All right. So I wanted to give the board, so this can take a little time. We'll roll out a different building each month. Because we didn't really ever have in one place how we've been doing since 2011. We went back seven years on all the things that we keep track of, other than Regents exams. Of course, you can see there's the diploma rate, the graduation rate, number completers, college courses, et cetera. So that way we can kind of, we can start to look at trends, but also set goals to, you know, once we get this all set, we'll meet with this spring and/or early next fall, involve the department chairs, K through 12, and to set goals for that year. Because, you know, right now, really, you know, I'm not sure if we really have set goals in each of the items that we're trying to achieve with our students. So a strategic scorecard like this keeps people more focused and kind of keeps you eye on the prize a little bit.
So for the different Regents that are listed there, is that the percent that have passed?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
And what does CC mean?
That's the Common Core. That's when it shifted from the old Regents to Common Core. And sometimes there were two in one year, sometimes there weren't.
Right. Okay. Thank you. I mean, that's a great idea. It helps.
I've probably asked this question numerous times, and I'm not sure if the data is out there. But I see on here you've got seniors to higher ed this past year of 2017, 82 percent. Do we know the retention of those individuals as they get into higher education after the first semester?
We don't really. There are services that you can pay a lot of money for that try to track that for you. It is a hard thing to track. It's something that a lot of schools struggle with because you might have a large percentage of students who go to higher ed, but then how many are still in higher ed half a year or a year later?
And the research on those services is not good.
Something that I'd like to see because I've asked this question to a lot of people. You know, what's your definition of college and career? And it seems like, you know, looking at this, the focus is on college-ready. You know, I look at career being, yeah, your college career, what are you looking to do? Or just a general career. And we got college-level courses. I guess this number is 11. We offer 11 college-level courses.
Courses, yes.
And how many students in college-level courses? It's almost 50 percent of our student body, or maybe a third, I guess. Do you have 600?
Just 550.
550. So, you know, and we're focused in that direction. And yet, maybe 50 percent of those students that went through all these college-level courses are no longer in higher education. So, I mean, what service did we do for these students? So I'm one that kind of leans towards, we've got to try to put a little bit more emphasis on making them career-ready, sure. I don't know career as trades or whatever else. It's not just all college because personally, I know too many college-bound kids that come out after four years, they got $250,000 in loans and they have a $35,000 job. We did them hardly any service at all. And I.
Something Mr. Zimmer and I have been speaking about, and we're planning for the future. So we plan on putting together a program, whether it's maybe towards the end of this school year or maybe not till next fall or Christmas. But basically, we're going to run, we're going to organize an assembly inviting back the students who just graduated previous June. And almost like a Phil Donahue style, where us old people. Q and A. Okay. You know, when you went to college or when you went out to the, you know, did you feel prepared? Was it something that you were, what were you prepared for? What were you not prepared for? And so, and present that to our current juniors and seniors, or maybe sophomores, or maybe everybody. So that they can hear from their peers, because we tell them all the time, you know, the adults tell them on a daily basis, that if they can hear it from their peers. It also gives the school that sometimes you get some interesting answers, well, you know, I don't think I was really well-prepared on this, that, the other thing. And then that gives us an ability to reflect on some of the things we're doing. So it's sort of doing it in a wrong way, but, you know, to find out where, how we're doing once they leave.
Very good. They're talking about it.
This is up to Mr. Bonjovi, this is his report card, but perhaps we could add the Bozies students on here, another line of students who are going to Bozies for careers?
Absolutely.
And I think sometimes the difference between a two-year program and a four-year program, I mean, I think there's students that are well-served with the two-year programs.
Absolutely.
And, you know, that might be all they really need. But, you know, still, that are very successful.
And that is a two- or four-year program that we count, that we're looking at.
It's two, both together.
Right. Both combined.
Very good. And who's Phil Donahue?
That's waiting for Mike. Hi. Jordy, there was a big piece, and this is changing the subject, in the Poughkeepsie Journal last week about the New England School District. And the reporter, I think it was an attorney for one of the parties, whether it was the superintendent, was very critical about the lack of having up-to-date policies. And so it kind of made me sit up straight and as it pertains to changing laws. And I just wanted to make sure that we're still on target.
We have a bunch of policies that I updated when Deborah was here and they were sent to the attorney. And I don't believe they've come back yet.
Maybe it's something, because it just, it had headlines.
Right. Sure. Absolutely.
And we talked about that a little bit.
Thank you. Anybody else?
They saved drive along. Whatever.
The snow has pushed our special ed cabinet a few different times, so we're hopeful to meet for the first time next Thursday, as long as there's no more snow. I'm going to be tasking that group with, we're going to start to be working on a handbook and updating some of our resources and documents throughout the district and try to improve some consistency among the stuff that we're doing and the language that we use. As Bill mentioned, we have Regents Week going on this week in the high school. Over the last few weeks, we spent a lot of time planning for our accommodations for our students with disabilities to make sure that they're getting all their accommodations. And one thing that we did this year was a staff member meeting with each of the students that was going to be taking a test individually to talk to them about their accommodations, where they would be getting them, what, how they would be getting them. So when they were coming in each morning for the test, they're at ease and not worrying about trying to find their room and where they would be for that day. So we had them prepared a week ahead of time that, you know, you'd be in this room with this person, getting these accommodations, and talking it through with them, just to try to ease some of that concern on the morning of the test. And as Joel mentioned. And as Joel mentioned too, Kathleen and Kathy Simpson will be attending a training on Teachers College. I met with Kathleen and Kathy today to talk about some of the work that Kathy has done throughout the year on professional development with some of our janitor teachers and our special ed teachers in regards to Teachers College. And we talked about some of the stuff that we're gonna be working on for the rest of the school year and things that we want them to take out about the training that they're gonna be going to. So it was a nice, good meeting to talk about the improvements that we've seen and the great work that she's doing with our special ed teachers specifically.
Questions?
Questions? And Kathy? Getting back to the director's report, we have some directors here. Anybody have any questions for the directors? Countation, food service, athletics. Yeah, good. All right, we'll move on.
My great job was basketball, real good.
Director of, no, approval of committee on special education. Be resolved, the Board of Education, hereby accepts the recommendation of committee on special education. According to the minutes of the CSE meetings of December fifteenth, twentieth, twenty-first, CSE, amendment, agreement, no meetings, December fifteen, fifteenth. CSE meeting, no meeting, transferred in, there is none to report. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Deb, second by Ed. Discussion? Is it Tom? No. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. We will committee on preschool, special education, be resolved, the Board of Education, hereby accepts the recommendation of the committee on preschool, special education, according to the minutes of CPSE meetings of December thirteenth and twentieth. And CPSE, no meeting, transferred in on January third. Amendment, agreement, no meeting, December seventh and nineteenth. This committee authorizes the arrangements of such student special education programs and services. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom and Deb. Discussion? All of them in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Under personnel, is there any issues taking personnel from A through I? Good. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, second by Ed. Discussion? Just want to recognize Deb Monahan for her retirement. I know Deb a long time. She's been a real big part of that elementary school, not only as a staff member, but also doing the extracurricular fundraising. And she was a big part of, part of the playground implementation down there, the handicap-accessible one. I know firsthand because she used to bump me all the time. But anyway, I appreciate all the work that she's done for the district and the community, because I know she's been involved in the community also in her earlier years. So congratulations to Deb Monahan, happy retirement. Quick question I have for, on the coaching resignation, I know Frank's here. I know when I read his letter, he would, or she, he would like to volunteer if he had the time. Is that something we need to approve, or...
Not yet, because I want to see what my next person, to see who the assistant was gonna be.
Okay. He could still be a volunteer, though, can't he? I mean, if we approve...
Possibly, yeah. I mean, yes. But right now, if I have a head coach and assistant coach, you know, we might just stay with that.
He would be full-time, is what he said.
Right.
All right, good guy.
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure that we have him approved, even had to volunteer, if that's the case. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, all of them in favor? Opposed?
I'm gonna, stain on age, resignations, please.
All of them in favor? We have five and one extension, no A's, okay. Student rep resume, are they a bean?
Good evening. I first want to say that the students are loving this Regents Week. It's a good one. Sports updates, on the varsity girls' basketball team, junior Brianna Razi scored 1,000 points. And I have wow written by that, because they're actually amazing, and the junior to have already scored 1,000 points in her whole basketball career. In varsity bowling, Brooke Harris scored a 224 to 267 in one day, which is really good out of like a 300. The high school cheer team won the first place in their Monticello competition. The wrestling team won second place in their competition a couple weeks ago. And the students that I talked to also wanted me to make sure that I mentioned that they beat New Pauls. Also, I believe the team captain, Brad Yosseba, won. He definitely won, I don't want to beat the team captain, but Brad Yosseba won the most outstanding wrestler. Extracurricular activity updates, the senior class is having a fundraiser on the 28th to raise money for their Disney trip at the backstage house in Wapage, Jersey. The musical, we have an introductory meeting. I'm not sure that the exact anything's been moved around to the snow, but very excited to get that rolling and have new members and freshmen and have a really cool musical this year.
What musical are you doing?
I'm not sure. I don't, I don't think it's decided yet, as of right now.
I can't say, because it hasn't been confirmed yet. But I can say they met last week.
Oh, they did?
The day after the snow day, it was rescheduled for different things.
Oh, cool.
So they met.
Next year.
No. I don't think you've got the rights to that.
Next year, okay.
One down the door.
On January thirteenth was Winter Fest with Rotary and the Rail Trail, and InTrak members were there and made a good time playing some games outside. Another big event that InTrak is putting on is our Queen of Hearts Charity Ball, which is our annual charity dance that we put on. And the money is gonna be fundraised for the Sarah Strong Foundation, as well as the backpack program. We also always donate money to the Sloan-Cutler Children's Hospital for child cancer research. And then we also see how much profit we make, and usually we do something else. Some ideas are in the making, I was thinking about donating some money to the new public library, because we use this as our local charity dance, and we, all the money is donated to local charities. Science Olympiad has that competition the next day after dance on Saturday the third. Model UN is planning for their Bosman trip for February eighth to eleventh, and we have 23 students going up. And that's gonna be really fun, we have to be a lot of freshmen going, so we've opened up a lot of opportunities for younger members, which is cool, because they get to experience that early on and then continue it until their senior year. The National Society is hosting their annual senior citizen luncheon on Valentine's Day, on the Wednesday Valentine's Day. And then Student Council is currently working on making a baking basket for the school ball. The other item that I want to talk about is, a couple weeks ago, there was a technology conference in which students were asked to be part of this panel, and it was, I was honored to be asked to be part of it, and it was exciting to hear what students had to say about, they discussed how they felt about one-to-one device school, or bring-your-own-device school. We discussed impact and changes in technology in the past several years at the, on our school district. And we also discussed implementation of different devices in classrooms, like iPads, laptops, and areas in which students wished they had more technology education. So it was really cool to see and be part of that conversation, because we had been discussing technology and where we should be funding. So I was able to bring maybe a little bit more of that side to the conversation, because I'm at the board meetings. And something that I personally felt was, I think, rather than just going to a one-to-one device school to say that we're a one-to-one device school, I think we should really see what kids are needing. And I think a lot of kids don't really maybe need a device, but some would take the opportunity, and some might want an iPad and a laptop, because they want the laptop to stay home, but the iPad to transfer to school. While some kids, me, I have my phone and I already have my laptop, I wouldn't need that opportunity. But it'd be very easy to maybe have kids just fill out an application form, and I don't think that would be maybe, whatever their situation is, maybe their laptop's broken and they need one for two months. I think that's sort of the opportunity that we want to offer. And then, that's all. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just think about that one-on-one. Thank you.
Any questions for Dean?
Yeah, what do you plan on doing? You should go to politics.
Yeah, I'm applying to schools, I'm doing like business and politics.
Yeah, I see it. I see, yeah.
Were you one of the founding members of Model UN? When did it...
No, that's when it's seven years ago.
It was seven?
You bet you're seven.
He's starting sixth grade. He tested up. Well, it's been seven years, wow.
Yeah, it's seven years, and it's, this is our biggest delegation to Bosman, so it's...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been an undertaking. We're also planning our own conference in April, so it's big.
Okay, but were you one of the first to go to Boston for that?
I was a, I was a freshman when I made Bosman, and that is not usually, but in the years past, we've added more and more freshmen.
Yeah, that's great.
Great. Thanks, Dean. Thank you. Okay, other businesses and operations. The contract amendment proposal, that's our construction management firm, be resolved, the Board of Education, based upon recommendation and interim superintendent. Hereby accepts the letter proposal dated January 11, 2018, submitted by the Palumbo Group, as presented to the Board at this meeting to amend their existing construction management agreement for the reconstruction project at the district schools dated December 15, 2015, to extend the duration of the construction management services beginning September 2017 through project closeout at an additional fee of $190,000. And be further resolved, the Board President is authorized to execute an addendum to the agreement, a copy of which addendum shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Looked by Sue, second by Heather. Discussion? All of them in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Budget transfer be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation and interim superintendent approve the following budget transfer, transfer for the 2017-18 school year, as presented to the Board. Budget transfer number 5555 for $11,712.30. Budget transfer 5577, $196,750. Budget transfer number 5833, $31,227.44. Budget transfer 5824, $114,131. And budget transfer 5836, $877,000, $877,309,64 cents. Can I have a motion, please? Looked by Deb, second by Sue. Discussion?
Thank you, Louise, for the explanations, very much.
You're welcome.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Construction change order, Dutch mechanical incorporated, be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation and interim superintendent approve the following change orders relevant to Dutch mechanical incorporated contract. November 29, 2017, for the high school to replace second hot water heater and replace sections of plumbing lines in Boyd's locker room and main office, total of $4,871. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, second by Ed. Discussion? All of them in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Health and welfare contract, Wapage Central School District, be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation and interim superintendent, approve the 2017-18 health and welfare contracts for two students that are cost $756.40 per student, for a total of $1,412.08. With the Wapage Central School District, it authorizes the Board's prevalent district clerk to execute the contract. Can I have a motion, please?
Uh-huh.
Looked by Sue, second by Heather. Discussion?
Louise, I just have a question. How can they fill you in after the year's not done? Would they probably, the students as well?
Usually they, we wait until we're more than halfway through. But yeah, we don't pay it until it's, you know, they get, this is like the first one that's come in.
I just think it's kind of, you know...
But you know what? On another hand, we'd like to have it off our books, so that we're not covering it. Yeah.
Any other questions? All of them in favor?
Just one, I think the math on that just needs to get changed. I think it's $1,412.86. Sorry.
Yeah, forty, forty, right?
Yeah. Sorry. I guess just making sure that the per student cost is forty and not forty versus, just making sure the math is right on.
Okay, and a transportation contract that had, that resolution had been withdrawn, so we have nothing there. All right, entrance superintendent.
Thank you. Yesterday, Trooper Craig Bender finished his presentations with the staff, so he was scheduled with the middle school yesterday. Again, fantastic presentation, I have great reports from the middle school staff. This one, this presentation is recognizing signs and symptoms of drug use, and again, as I reported before, just how things are hidden in plain sight, how the drug world works very hard to do that. So just teaches a little bit of a heads up on those items. Trooper Bender just today sent me some dates that we'll be working with the principals with, for him to come back to do presentations with the students in large groups. We do have, though, a very big event coming up next Thursday, February 1st, and that is gonna be the viewing of Not My Child. So I just want to read publicly for the viewing audience and for the board, a letter that was sent home with all winter athletes. My dear parents and guardians, as we are all aware, the opioid epidemic is the number one crisis facing our youth in our area and across the nation. New sources regularly report stories about young people who have either gone astray due to the ravaging effects of opioids, or even worse, who have lost their lives because of this scourge. Unfortunately, we have experienced the tragic loss of life due to this epidemic, even in our own school community. The Highland Central School District is recommitting itself to the themes of education and prevention as it, as the district is, as they relate to opioid use for the establishment of a community coalition against all drug use, most particularly opioid use. In cooperation and collaboration with the town employed police department and the Highland Rotary Club, we mutually affirm that we share a vital, common goal, education regarding the prevention of opioid and drug use and abuse. On Thursday, February 1st, the Highland Community Task Force is sponsoring and hosting the premiere viewing of the film, Not My Child, at 6:30 PM in the high school auditorium. This locally-produced film highlights the impact of opioid use on several of our local residents, including Highland High School graduates. Due to the close link between opioid use and treatment of athletic injuries, all athletes currently participating in a winter sport here at Highland are required to attend this event with a parent or guardian. Chief wage will begin the evening with a short presentation regarding opioid use, followed by the viewing of the film. It truly does take a village to raise a child. It is my sincerest hope that you'll make this evening a priority for you and your child, so that I will see you there on February 1st. Only together can we make a difference, and perhaps together, we can save a life. So this will be the first, the initial viewing of the film. It is our, we anticipate that with the athletes coming, I believe that we have some of our high school clubs also planning on coming. I know the Rotary, Highland Rotary's coming, so we should have a pretty full auditorium. And then from there, we'll plan future presentations of this movie. So again, continuing on with our drug awareness, so we showing of the movie, and then hopefully getting Trooper Bender back pretty quickly after... getting Trooper Bender back pretty quickly after the viewing of this movie for him to meet with the students also.
Can I just take this back? I'm sorry, that number is 1512. That we were talking about, Health and Welfare? Sorry. I knew it looked off.
That's all for now.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes?
Just a quick comment. I'd like to thank Tom for taking the concerns of this board over the last several months to move discussion forward in regards to the epidemic that's hitting our area, especially and the entire country. So I want to thank you for taking the initiative on moving. And the entire school community is on board with the educational piece of trying to get our students to know the dangers and the signs of issues and try to work with them. Hopefully, like we said, if we can, with all this that we're doing, if we can save one more life, it's...
Thank you. Okay, Sarah?
Well, to jump on a little bit with February 1st, I think I mentioned this before, but during the day in the schools, each school is going to be doing an educational component to the opioid awareness. So for instance, in the elementary school, the theme for the day, just remind me...
Healthy choices.
Is about healthy choices. At each grade level, we'll do different activities related to healthy choices, and they're going to have a banner where students can pledge, kind of, to make healthy choices. At the middle school, you'll be doing...
Announcements beginning of each period, followed up by the opportunity for teachers to have brief discussions with that. And that information will go home and email through the K-12 alert to the parents, so they know what we've discussed in the building that day.
And then Bill, at the high school?
At the high school, each of the four core areas, English, Science, Math, and Social Studies, each teacher will start each of their classes with either a discussion or a brief video about the topic for the first five to eight minutes to have a discussion to prep the students. And each department will approach in the same way, show the same information for some consistency.
So I did that, that was a good way to tie in the day for the students, since we did decide that maybe it wasn't the best idea to show the film to everyone. They're at least getting something. And for those students who will be attending in the evening, they have some information to back up the video. So that's happening. I would also like to just say a little bit about teachers' college and to thank Kathy Simpson for the work she's doing, but especially to recognize Kathleen, with Joel's support, has really done tremendous work in making this happen at the, at the elementary school. And I'm so excited that she is now, she's going to be able to go down to Columbia next week to learn even more and to be able to bring back more to our teachers and for our students. So I mean, it really is exciting to watch the change in teaching that's happening at each level, at each building, so, or at each grade level. So that's, I really want to recognize Kathy for that. Also, the poverty study, we're continuing our work with that last month in January and then maybe next week, I think, at the middle school, where the faculty meeting discussions in the small groups. So, and on the second half of the book, what we had teachers do, I've gotten them for the middle, sorry, for the high school and the elementary school, we did just a mid-year sort of quick survey of, you know, what has struck them from the book, what are some ways that has changed when they're doing the classroom, what are suggestions for us as a district moving forward? So we're compiling that information and really talking about what we want to do. But one positive thing that has come from it, we had an elementary school teacher, Ashley Hopper, she's a first grade teacher. She really jumped on and has created a committee, and they're working on compiling sort of a master list of different resources within the district as well as in the Highland community and the larger community to be able to share with parents so that, so that, and we can send that. So rather than parents having to come to us and ask questions, we can share that out so that people have that available to them, put on the website, all of that. So they're in the process. And you know, we have, we have so many resources, but you know, some of it, it's in our guidance office, some of it is our, our main offices, some are the food service, you know, so to try and get as much of that in one place together, that's a positive direction, I think. And this is all work that the teachers are coming together voluntarily to do and to work for our students. So that's really going well. We'll be looking, in February, at our instructional council meeting, we'll be discussing part three of the book and talking about, you know, what, what direction to take next. So that's, it's really moving along well. And I went to both, or no, I wasn't able to go to the high school, but I went to the elementary school and sat in. I meant to try and sit in a bunch of discussions, but I kept getting caught up in the session. So I went to three or four of the discussion groups, and the conversation was rich. It was really, students are, art students, teachers are really thinking about how the information impacts their students and what they may be able to do moving forward. So it's going well. And then the last thing, oh, a little short note, Joel was mentioning the robotics fair today. There is, if you look at our Twitter feed on the website, there's Gloria Hernandez posted a couple of videos of the kids and some pictures of the kids playing with robotics. It's really, it's neat to watch. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about was our tech committee that Dean had mentioned. And truly, across the board, I think everyone's, every adult's favorite part of the day was the fishbowl, listening to student perspective and really getting a feeling for, you know, what they're experiencing, what their thoughts are for us moving forward. And it was nice to have a range from ninth grade up to 12th grade, because of our 12th grade students, really, when they started elementary school, it was a completely different technology world, really, than what there is now. And so, you know, and it was interesting, too, some things that the seniors didn't experience at middle school, our ninth graders have been experiencing. So it was, it was great conversation. I think in the, the report that I submitted with the, with my, my part of the agenda, I'm sorry, it's a little bit more anecdotal than straight out writing, but I did want to show you some of the pictures of the work that we did. But I also summed up the student fishbowl and, and what their general thoughts were. We'll be looking at that more closely. And at the end of the day, the morning was a little bit more about professional development and really getting a feel for where we are right now, where we'd like to do, what's out there. And then the afternoon, we, we broke into three, well, we broke into two groups, but we narrowed down to three big topics that we wanted to discuss, and that was equitable access. I think that was the thing that was most interesting to me from the, the students. The students didn't call it equitable access, but they were very concerned that all students have the ability to get to the internet or get to the technology. So they were very concerned that students have the access that they need. And what Dean was saying, he has a lot of access on his own, but he and other students wanted to make sure that that student that didn't have access, that were able to buy that. So, so the Committee for Equitable Access, they're going to look at creating a survey to get an idea across the district of what students do have access, how reliable that access is, and what kind of assets there are, there is. And then the second committee is a K-12 curriculum, really looking at how we can integrate the ISTE standards, International Society of Technology in Education.
ISTE?
ISTE, I-S-T-E. Yes. ISTE, there are K-12 ISTE standards for curriculum, and so that committee is working with their grade levels or the departments to discuss which of those standards were, are best served by the classroom teacher versus which standards would be best served by, whether it's a special, the TA that we have doing some work. One of the things that that came out, too, in the, in what the students said, when we asked them, well, what should you have learned earlier on in elementary school? And two things really stood out. One was typing and typing skills, because we just don't really teach that much anymore. And I think what's very different from when, I think, most people in this room anyway, went to a friend's school, is you really can't wait until high school to learn typing skills. You know, you really, they need to start working on those skills as young as kindergarten or first grade, if we're going to help them do that efficiently and helpfully. So that was one thing. And that was, you know, kind of a very concrete. The second thing was using search features well and deeply. And I think that really leads into the bigger national conversation about real versus fake news or, and you know, there was real concern about, okay, if we just put something in Google, what is the information we're getting? And is it even manageable? If I put something in Google and I get one million hits, how do I, how do I figure that out? What, how can I narrow my, my search so that I'm getting the information that really is going to be useful to me? So those were two things that, that I thought really stood out in, in that particular part of the conversation. So, so that K-12 committee is going to look at how, how can we integrate it and what can we do to create a true K-12 continuum, to make sure that students, by the time they graduate, are college or career ready? And because as we know, all, all careers now, pretty much, need some sort of digital literacy to function well. So, so that's, and then the third committee eventually will be professional development. But as we were discussing, we thought these two, the K-12 and the equitable access questions needed to be determined a little bit more before we focus. I mean, we've been doing ongoing professional development, but to, to again, focus our direction for that professional development would be helpful once we have a little better idea. So we're going to meet again the end of February, in between our meeting in January and February, these committees will be doing work. They're doing a lot of their, they're sharing through Schoology, our online learning platform. So that's how they're, they're putting it together. Again, weather makes continuity a little bit difficult, but hopefully the Schoology eases some of that. But it was really, it was a great day. I, I think, they're really, as far as I could tell from the crowd, there was no one in there that left feeling like it had been a waste of their time, or that they knew everything we talked about, or, you know, everyone learned something, and definitely everyone left feeling like, no, we have some real work that we need to get done, this is correct. I mean, you know, these are the ways we want to go. So it was, it was a great, great day. And again, huge thank you to the students for being, they were very willing to speak openly, and I, I could see some teachers, I think we all had to kind of sit on our hands or cover our mouth because we all wanted to interject, and they were like, well, what about this? What do you think here? You know, we could have kept them there all day. But they, they did a great job and, and Melina, right, Melina, she was our facilitator and their senior, and she did a nice job, I thought, keeping the conversation moving, right? And allowing people to have the opportunity, or students have the opportunity to talk, but also not getting it bogged down and wanting to get a question. So it really, it was good.
It was great. And for those who don't understand the fishbowl or for our viewing audience, what that means is the tables are all in the middle of the room, and the students themselves are just sitting at the table, and they're leading the discussion, and all the adults are sitting on the outer edge of the room, and we're just observers, listening. And that's where we really learned a lot of things.
And again, it was great that the students felt very comfortable, because that could be a very intimidating situation, to know your teachers are sitting there, listening to you, you know, talk about them essentially, and their, so it was, it was a good day, and I really look forward to continuing that work. And I mean, ultimately, our goal is to bring forward thoughts for the rest of the Smart Schools money, you know, what would be the best way for the Board and for the district to, to utilize that money. But then also really looking for a five-year plan, where do we really want to go as we look at technology? Which is a little bit difficult, because it changes everything.
It's interesting that you, you mentioned the digital literacy and Alice's opinion about career readiness. It's amazing to me where I work, once vendors come, whether they be HVAC folks or the cleaning folks, or you don't have a lot of instruction, and every single one of them, they brought their little tablets, and that's where they have their business. It is just so, it's perfect.
It is. And I think part of that, too, where it really pulls in is even, you know, the invoicing that you do from, from that program. And you know, even things, even people that I work with in our, our personal life, you know, whether it's the person who plows our driveway or whoever it might be, making sure that your, your invoice looks professional and that things are spelled correctly.
It's such a change.
And knowing how to, to make it understandable, so the person paying the bill knows, knows what they're paying for. Yeah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Sarah, I did have one question. I was listening to a radio program on the way to the school board, and I've also heard last week, is this flu epidemic? And, you know, these physicians that were talking, they really seem alarmed and about the severity of it, apparently it's really bad, it has to be west. But are we, are we encouraging, whether our educators or the kids? Because even, you can be contagious even before you feel symptoms on this one.
Well, we generally, across the board, do a lot of work with students about washing hands whenever, I mean, that's the, that's the biggest thing we can do, is washing hands.
Covering their mouth.
Covering their mouth, you know, you don't, you're persuading, you want to put it in your...
You can be talking.
I, I'm with you.
You're bringing the air on this one.
And even as a, as a mom, before I got here tonight, my, my daughter rides soccer, the girl threw up before she, just before they came to pick her up. So I was very happy that that happened before him. But yeah, you just kind of never, never know. But we try to just emphasize the hand washing after everything, and yeah, trying to be, but it's, it's hard to...
If you don't feel well, don't come.
Don't come. That's my biggest thing. And then I, for the adults, as well as for the children.
Yeah, because you're just a big people, too.
Any other questions for Sarah?
I'm for Sarah, but Dean, I'd really like your feedback from the students on the video that they're showing on Saturday. I'm sure you're going to report on it, but just in case you don't, you're not my child, I'd really like the student feedback that are listening.
Okay.
Just, I'd like your thoughts.
Sounds good.
For saying that, thank you.
I have a question on that, actually. Are parents mandatory for all students that are in attendance?
It's not mandatory, but it's highly recommended. Yeah. I mean, for the, for the athletes, who definitely said that it was mandatory.
Right, right.
But it's, it's better digested, I think, with the eagle.
I think so. It's a very powerful film. Absolutely.
Is that mandatory for all winter athletes, or is it just how it is suggested?
It is mandatory. Yes.
Okay. Moving on to Board of Education, new business. The Elster County School Boards Association meeting is scheduled for January 25, 6:00 PM at the New Paul Center, just FYI. NISBA's Capital Conference, requesting a district president for NISBA's Capital Conference, February 11 through 12. RSCP date is January 25. And if anybody is interested, please see Lisa, let her know. The Elster County School Boards Association Distinguished Friends of Education Award nomination request, event to be held May 24th. So we as a board have come up with a name, and I know, I mean, this is going to be the third year, and I think maybe we should really look into some of that in the school community or recently retired from the school community that has given back to the district students in the community, so think about that, too. I know the last two years, I appreciate that, you know, I was nominated last year, and the previous year was also a community member, but maybe now we can give someone that's either recently retired from the school system or, or the administrators can give us some names of, if they feel is deserving of it, and we'll look at them and make a decision. All right. Respectful School Board Workshop, to be held in March 22nd, the 7th, 30th, at the both these centers. I think that's all of the new, does anyone have any new business? Old business? We're at the home stretch for our superintendent search, February 6, our next board meeting. We will make an announcement at that meeting. We will slightly move our setting to the cafeteria. We will be inviting the, I believe it was 19 community, both school and general community members that were involved in the interview. were involved in the, um, interview committee that was put together, that's going to come in. Of course, the entire school and general community is welcome to attend. That's where we are right now, we, uh, at the kickoff, our original timeline was to make, give an announcement sometime in February, and we're right on track with that, and, um, I'm sure that everyone will be pleasantly surprised and, um, excited about our new superintendent and we move forward, so, we look forward to that on February sixth. Uh, anything for the good and welfare of the district? Any other old business that we missed? Okay, we'll open the meeting up to public comment. No public comment, we'll motion to adjourn. Motion by Tom, second by Heather. Discussion? All over the favor?
I understand, guys.
So move. Thank you everyone, have a great night, and see you on February.